Welcome to the September twenty seventh City of Broussard Council meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn it in to our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge. Councilman Garrett, would you listen to prayer?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, almighty God, to enlighten our minds so our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move. A second.
The minutes were included in the council's packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question?
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the August two thousand twenty-two financial report. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
I present it tonight as our CFO, Karen Fontenot. Karen, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Your August financials are in your packet. You will not have a sales tax deposit for this month. The one we received for the month of August was reported in June. The one you are going to see in September was six percent ahead of our budgeted targets. So when we adopted our new budget, we set a new level. In each of our one cent sales taxes, we have to have a minimum of six hundred four thousand dollars every month to meet our budgetary goals. It was four percent ahead of that. It was six hundred thirty-seven thousand in each of our one cent taxes. That's a good way to start out the year. On another positive note, on the expenditure side, every single one of our departments is operating under budget. It ranges from one percent up to four percent. We're going to continue to monitor our departmental costs and make sure our revenues are hitting those targets because we definitely do not want to get into a deficit spending situation. Does anyone have any questions about any of the financials?
No public comment.
Question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, Mr. Blake Romero with Legendary Contractors requesting a front sent-back variance for lots fifteen, one thirteen Abercrombie Way in Longland Estates from twenty feet to fifteen feet. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Romero's here tonight. Did you want to address the council?
Mayor, I have some questions.
Does the council have discussion or questions for Mr. Romero?
But two issues would ever.
Mr. Romero, please approach the microphone so we can get it on public record.
This would be for our fire people and for our maintenance people. Two issues I have when we get a subdivision that they want a variance. I want to make sure that the fire safety issues are not compromised. And also when we take this subdivision in for perpetual maintenance, where our maintenance crews be hindered from going and work on water lines, electrical, underground utilities. If that's not compromised and if they tell me we're in good shape, I'll give you the variance. There you go. So if I can get some input?
From our standpoint, Kenny, as far as water and drainage, it's subsurface drainage, so that's fine. And the water, we have no issue getting to the water line and make a tap or a repair would have you. And it's not, it's not going to be close enough to jeopardize. That's my, one of my main concerns as well is if the water line is close enough to jeopardize the foundation of the home.
Right.
This shouldn't be the case here.
Right. Chief, did you see the side setback on that development? We've got to get fire. Yeah.
I did not see the setback, but the, the plat, but if it's a five-foot variance from the front, it's just going to be closer to the road. It's not going to affect us one way or another.
The side setbacks five feet, huh?
It's fifteen, but it's.
Fifteen instead of twenty.
Requesting to go from twenty to fifteen.
So the twenty-foot front setback, the idea behind that is if you park a car in the driveway, the car doesn't stick out over the sidewalk. That's why we have a twenty-foot front setback. In this case, it's ninety-degree parking. So he's not gonna, we don't really have that issue. If you look at his site plan, do I have that right? You have, you have ninety-degree parking.
Yes, that's correct. And there is an ordinance that said you can go up to ten foot, but we only need fifteen.
But the side setback, Brian, is five feet, so you're going to have ten feet between houses to get your safety equipment.
Yeah, we could. But he's not asking, he's asking for a five-foot reduction in the front.
But I'm looking at the whole big picture, Walter.
Oh, no, but five-foot is side setback.
Right. I'm just looking at the big picture, so.
That's normal for us. We're used to operating in those.
We good? I'm good.
No public comment.
Any further council discussion?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point two, opioid awareness, one pill can kill. Mrs. Stacy Conrad with the opioid prevention outreach is the opioid prevention outreach coordinator with LDAH, Dr. Tina Stefanski, Region Four Medical Director with LDAH, and Mr. Keith Alamo, Chief Investigator with Lafayette Parish Coroner's Office to give us a report on this subject. Welcome.
Hey, good evening. I'm Dr. Tina Stefanski with Office of Public Counsel, Mr. Mayor, members of the council chief. Thanks for inviting us to be here tonight. I know Dr. Kenneth O'Neal is our Lafayette Parish coroner and he's got a meeting across town in a few minutes. So I don't know if he wants to maybe give some just kind of opening remarks. Just to tell you a little bit about this issue, actually Keith Talamo, the Chief Investigator for the Coroner's Office, and Dr. O'Neal reached out in April earlier this year to let us know they were particularly concerned about the increase in overdose deaths in our community. So we've been working together since then to increase awareness and to work on some other, you know, other activities that Stacy will talk about in a second regarding our response to this increase in overdose. And so we are seeing an increase in fatal and non-fatal overdoses, particularly led by the fentanyl epidemic. And Stacy will do a tremendous job in educating you all about that very quickly, but she does a tremendous job. But I just wanted to turn the floor over to Dr. O'Neal before he has to leave.
Thank you all for having us tonight. I don't think I have to preach to anybody about the problem that's out there. And all of a sudden, we've become very popular and people want to hear about it. You know, everybody, I believe everybody in this room knows somebody who's had a death, you know, from narcotics and fentanyl with it. You know, in two thousand fifteen, Lafayette Parish had thirty-two overdose deaths and none of them had fentanyl. Let's fast forward to twenty twenty-one. We had a hundred and thirty-seven overdose deaths and a hundred, excuse me, and a hundred and one of them had fentanyl. And we're ahead of schedule this year. Through July, we already got a hundred deaths and eighty-one of them fentanyl. You know, the drug, I mean, it's like a grain of salt and it's put in everything. And the people it's affecting, they're rich, they're poor, they're black, they're white. It doesn't matter where you come from and who you are. It's out there and there's very little room for error. A lot of times, most of these people are not drug addicts. I've heard stories of college kids, you know, borrowing a pill to stay up, to study, and it was laced with it. Next thing you know, they're dead. I've seen sleeping pills with it. It's common where you're getting calls every day. I used to hardly ever get a call about an overdose. But am I right, Keith? Now it's, it's every day you're getting phone calls and, you know, most of these parents are, you know, they're distraught and they have no idea because their kids are not your typical, what you think of as a drug addict. It's out there. It's now become the leading cause of death between eighteen and forty-five-year-olds. It's surpassed cardiovascular disease. What we're trying to do is make everybody aware and we're looking for solutions because we certainly don't have the answers. We're working on a lot of things, but anything y'all can come up with, we would appreciate. If we can help y'all in any way, please let us know. Thank you for having me.
So I know most of you up here and thank you, Mayor, for asking us to come. I gave everybody a packet and typically I have a PowerPoint presentation and the Chief Investigator with the Coroner's Office, Keith Talamo, and I go around and we'll talk to anybody who will listen. And to the people who know me, no, I don't ever shut up about the things I'm passionate about. So we go around and we'll talk to any group. We talk to civic groups. Right now, we're trying to talk to educators, teachers. We, we're trying to develop a program with, in conjunction with UL for students type, a refusal skills program for seventh to twelfth graders that will go out and teach kids about this that will be actually presented by the UL students. Because you and I could get up there all day long and talk to these kids and we're just a mom or a dad, right, or a teacher. And they're not going to hear us. So we're going to work with this, with the UL Nursing Department and have them help us prepare a curriculum for our students in our region. As Dr. O'Neal and Dr. Stefanski said, fentanyl is in everything. The, there are two main, the second, the second, the second thing in your packet is about the cartel. Last year alone, or year-to-date, in two thousand one, the DEA seized enough fentanyl to kill every single American in the United States. That's a lot. And it's here. It's in Louisiana. We're a port state. It's going to come here. There's a really good video. It's Dr. Stefanski's favorite. The DEA Administrator does CBS This Morning's, it's about a seven-minute video, and she does a good job of explaining how the cartel, what they're doing and how they're targeting our kids. When I was in high school, a typical drug deal was on the, in a back alley in exchange of money and hands. And it's not like that anymore. Eighty to ninety percent of drug deals are online. The second to last page in your packet, everybody knows what these are. They're emojis. And they're an emoji code that kids are using online or even people with substance use disorders are using online to order drugs. They're shipping a USPS to your front door, your kid's front door, in a package. USPS needs a warrant to open your mail, whereas FedEx and UPS do not because they're private companies. So they're shipping them using fake addresses. Pay, it's being paid for with Bitcoin, so you can't, it's all encrypted. And the kids are very, very smart to this and people like me are not because I don't know the social media world like a seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old does. How are we doing in Louisiana? This, this right here shows how our neighboring states are doing compared to us in opioid overdose deaths. Alabama saw a thirty-three percent increase over five years. Arkansas saw a thirty-three percent increase over five years. Mississippi, a fifty-three percent increase over five years. And we're at almost a ninety-two percent increase in opioid overdose deaths. So for those who don't know what opioids are, they're pretty much painkillers. They're what you would get after you have a back surgery, chronic pain, post-surgical pain, those types of things. So fentanyl does have a place in the hospital, but an ER doctor recently said that there are so much more fentanyl on the streets than they're actually giving in the hospital. And it's not the same fentanyl. This is synthetic fentanyl, not made by a pharmaceutical company. They're getting the, the chemicals to make it from China and they're being shipped to Mexico where the two drug cartel, the Sinaloa and the Jalisco New Generation cartel, are making these pills, gasoline mixed with fentanyl and shipping them across the border. Just a few weeks ago, Keith and I saw a story about a kid, I think he was thirteen, who brought a hundred and fifty rainbow fentanyl to school. That's this right here. They look like Sweet Tarts. And the teacher who found them in his book sack, when she opened the bag, the powder, the powder of it was just so strong that it sent her to the hospital on a Narcan drip. So Narcan is an overdose reversing drug that you can get in any pharmacy. Louisiana has a standing order, so anybody can get it. It looks like this. I have supplied with the help of our Acadiana Human Services District. I've supplied the Police Department in Broussard and the Fire Department in Broussard with enough, I mean, enough Narcan. And they've, they had to use this on, on people in our community. So it is here. It is in Broussard. I have a vested interest. I live here. I raise my family here and it's scary. There's always going to be something new coming out. There's just a little bit more information that you can read over. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But one thing that we, we are concerned about is kids getting a hold of this. It's pressed, these pills are pressed to look like Adderall or Valium or Xanax or Oxycontin or any of those things, and it's none of those things. It's simply fentanyl. So with that, I'll wrap up by telling y'all the, the hidden dangers in our community that our kids are getting a hold of is things like this. How many of y'all have seen this in a convenience store next to five-hour energy? Kratom. There's some information on Kratom. This is something else called Finabit. And it's scary because when you ask your teenager what this is, they think it's a generic five-hour energy and it's not. It's got chemicals. Dr. Stefanski and I actually spoke to the Poison Control Physician today who runs Poison Control and he said you could take ten of these and send them to a lab and they're all going to come back with different levels of different things. None of it is regulated. So, and this is causing kids to have seizures and they're seeing an increase in students having seizures in high schools because they're taking it and nobody knows what they're taking. The FDA will send a cease and desist letter, so they'll just relabel it as something else. This is in our gas stations in Broussard. I just went to a gas station, I won't say the name of it, but I just went to a gas station in Broussard to get some mints before I got here and I always look now because now I can't unsee it. And they sold something that was, it, on the bottle, it said, feel euphoria in less than ten minutes. And it didn't say what was in it, so I took a picture of it and looked it up when I got here. And it's kava leaf and it's kava leaf extract and Kratom. But it doesn't tell you the ingredients and it's right there on the, on the, right there by where you check out for anybody to just buy. So any questions?
Can you tell us exactly what Kratom is?
Kratom is a, is a plant in, in Thailand and Asia. It gives you the same, it's, it gives the same effect as heroin. It's, or, you know, it gives a euphoric effect. In small doses, it gives you a lot of energy and in large doses, it's got a sedative effect. And it's, it's sold at pretty much every gas station, every smoke shop. It's sold in leaf form, so it can look like marijuana. They're also selling things called Delta eight, Delta nine, Delta ten. Those are all THC's and marijuana. So Delta nine is marijuana. It's, it's THC. And then Delta eight, they call it marijuana light. And they're just taking CBD or hemp and extracting it from that. And so it'll come in pill form. I saw a, I saw a packet that said ADDALL, Addal. So it's just missing the ER Adderall for anybody. It was two pills and it said, stay awake, focus. So those are the kinds of things that are here. They're in our community. And it's just, it's, it's an endless amount of, of things that are targeting our kids.
Because people don't, and, and again, I think the DA, the administrator of the DA does a really good job of explaining this. But the issue with fentanyl, and Dr. O'Neal can probably speak to this better than I can, but the issue with fentanyl is it's much more powerful, fifty and a hundred times more powerful than morphine and heroin. It's very, so as a result of that, to naive drug user, which is why when we talk about kids, you know, if someone is a, has a substance use disorder, they've got a high tolerance. They're looking for a better high. If they take something that's got fentanyl in it, it might give them more of a high, right? But if you take a child or a kid who's looking to take, you know, someone hands them what they think is an Adderall to help them study or Xanax to relax, so they go out to a bar or something to, you know, give them a little bit of energy. And it's fentanyl. It's not, you know, it's a counterfeit pill. These don't come from a drugstore. These are, these are counterfeit pills. If it contains fentanyl to these over, these naive drug users, these kids or recreational drug users, they don't have that same tolerance. It's too strong. It's too powerful. And that's just leading to the overdoses. And that's really why when, when Dr. O'Neal and Keith brought this to our attention, they said, hey, look, it's, it's, as Dr. O'Neal says, everywhere. It's the heroin user who doesn't realize that his heroin is greatly being replaced with fentanyl. And again, seeing overdoses in those individuals, but again, runs a gambit to recreate, you know, to those who are using drugs recreationally, thinking again that they're getting something that they're not getting. These kids are online, on Snapchat, on the social media sites, thinking they're ordering Adderall or Xanax and it's not. They're not looking for fentanyl. They're looking for these other drugs and they're just, they just don't know. And so again, we look for the opportunity to educate y'all because y'all are going to help us to, to spread this word and this message that it's, it's dangerous. And there's two different issues, right? We started this with fentanyl and overdoses, leading to death, hospitalizations, you know, severe outcomes. And then the more we've learned, the more we're learning that, hey, there's also, that, that's one thing, right, fentanyl. And then there's also these things that are in your gas stations that are giving kids that have easy access to people of all ages. They're mixing it with alcohol. It's a potentiator for the effects of alcohol. So kids can get really drunk really fast. You know, you think about law enforcement. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's just a whole new world. Nothing is, disappears on these labels. You know, it's, you can't tell what's, those labels really mean nothing when you see these things over the counter. So it's kind of two separate issues. One is, are these overdoses linked to the increase in deaths and, and hospitalizations? And then now also this access to these really mood-altering drugs that are, that are real harmful. And again, we're real, we're concerned about, about our whole population, but again, about kids because they're pretty susceptible. So thanks. So thank you. Oh, and Stacy was saying for Narcan, and it's really something we should all consider about keeping in our first aid kits. If you know anyone in, in your, in your family, friend at work who has a substance use disorder or you're just worried about, hey, this, this stuff is out there and it could be, it could be anyone that you know, using it unsuspect, unsuspecting. If you get in a lock zone, the chain pharmacies really carry it more necessarily than some of the locals, but some local pharmacies do too. In the state of Louisiana, you can get it over the counter. You go to the pharmacy. It's no cost. Most insurance is paying full. Medicaid pays in full. So again, it's a good thing for people to, to know about. And, and again, we'd ask you help and spread more.
You're speaking of Narcan?
Mm-hmm.
So pharmacies carry it, insurance is paid for for the person?
Correct. And it's a nasal spray.
Would want to have it in their home?
Yes, sir. So insurance is Medicaid, out of pocket. It's about fifty dollars if you use a coupon from a good ORX. You can't hurt someone by giving them Narcan. If they had a heart attack and, and they, and you think, hey, I don't know if it's a heart attack, I don't know, you know, there's, there's a drug, there's, there's drugs there or someone's telling you, hey, I think this person might have used something. If you give them Narcan, you, you cannot hurt them. If it was not a drug overdose, again, you didn't, there was no harm there. I wonder, Dr. O'Neal, do you have anything to add?
You know, the drug problem in this country, and it's been around for a while, you know, up till about ten years ago, it was these pill factories, these doctors had these pain clinics and you'd go in and they owned a pharmacy and you walked out of that door and went in their pharmacy and got it. That's no longer the case. Most of the, most have been shut down. You know, and we as physicians learned how to write for medicines again. I mean, it was nothing to write for thirty lore tabs five years ago after doing a big surgery. And we've all gotten away from it. You know, now when you were writing thirty, now you're writing for ten. And if they need more, they're going to come back and see you. And so it's not, it's not coming out of the doctors' offices anymore. For the most part, it's coming across the border. It's these homemade pills and you know what you get. And they look like Skittles or Pop-Tarts. They can do anything and these kids are getting a hold of them. So, thank you.
You talked about the educational programs, which are great, educating the kids. That's where it starts. Have you been getting any feedback from law enforcement in this area? I mean, you're talking about the drug overdoses now that, I mean, that's astronomical numbers, man. It's kind of scary.
We have gotten reports back from our local fire departments. I know Broussard Fire Department has had some calls locally that they've had to give Narcan. And it, it did become so concerning that I did call all of our local pharmacies here and they do carry Narcan over the counter besides the big, the big chain pharmacies. Lafayette, last month, I believe, had to, did, gave out forty kits. They used forty kits, which means that that was potentially, it could have been eighty people, right? So because there's two, there's two doses per kit.
But how do we keep it off the street before we get to that point? It's my concern.
That's.
So, you know, I remember back in the seventies and eighties, I was on the sheriff's office. We had a developer task force because PCP Angel Dust was the drug of choice at the time. Well, we had agencies from the sheriff's office, had four of us. We had four officers from the Lafayette City Police and we had a bunch of guys from the state police because drugs crosses, crosses jurisdictional lines. Okay, we finally realized that. We had to put our task force together to, to, to take care of that problem. And I guess I can ask our chief, I mean, is there something like that going on with the fentanyl or, or the drug abuse here?
I think that, that, we, we just spoke with the sheriff the other day about it and it's an ongoing problem. I think it's coming in from the border so fast and it's really, it's tough to combat it right now. You know, you're doing it, the normal narcotics, they're doing search warrants, they're getting information. But I mean, you go in there and you get it and it's coming right back at you, so. Is there anything in the immediate future? Hopefully we can, we can do something to combat it.
I don't think you can keep up with it at this level. And, and I'm getting on my soapbox for what it's worth, you know? It's got to be stopped before it crosses the border, at the border. Now, who's in charge? Depends on what you read, but that's where it starts. Because once it gets to town, it just scatters. Like you said, these kids get on the computer and move it and none of us know, even know, you know, what we're looking at. But it's not, it starts at the border and it's, you know, talk to your congressman, your senators, whatever. I mean, something's got to be done because we're losing the battle right now.
I know. We were successful by, by getting the mules. That was it.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if it's the same process with fentanyl, like, you know, a quantity is coming in each parish, coming in through Texas? Is it quantities or are they just, you know? Right. Yeah. Scary. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that informative and eye-opening presentation and the support you're giving our fire department, our police department to help in the battle. We appreciate you being here. Item four point three, Mr. Tom Holloman with Tri-C Real Estate and Laura Carlisle with Baker Donaldson, Beerman Caldwell and Burkowitz, variance request for cell tower on Allison's Parkway. A, first variance, variance allowing the tower to build within a thousand feet of a residential subdivision. And B, secondly, variance allowing the tower to be built on a sixty-five-foot by seventy-five-foot lot instead of a one hundred by one hundred foot per the local ordinance. Mr. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Tom Holloman. My company, Tri-C Real Estate, works with Vertical Bridge. Vertical Bridge is a cell tower development company and they build cell towers all over the United States. They have been enlisted by AT&amp;T all over Louisiana, but in this particular community to locate or, or was requested a few months ago to locate a, another site for another cell tower location in Broussard in a certain area of town. Right now, they, of course, do have some coverage here. They're out on the perimeter. Right now, they, of course, do have some coverage here, they're out on the perimeters. You, you've seen a couple of poles out on ninety, there's one, there's two out there actually. But they're primarily covering the community from, from the perimeter. And what they are running into here, unlike, just like all the other carriers all across the country, they cannot keep up with the insatiable demand for these services. And so, they find themselves now, Baton Rouge, the same way Lafayette, having to come in a little closer to put another site in, so to speak, to satisfy the, 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 the capacity problems that they have. They, they, they move forward by the public demand for their services. So, when we began looking in the area of Broussard that they needed to have a site, we actually were a little bit further north than where we are now at this location tonight. And so, we, we thought we had something worked out, but we ended up having to go further south, actually. So, the location that we have, that we have come up with for this project is, is on the southern perimeter of where AT&amp;T really needs to be to do this project. Well, one of the things that I do when I first come into a community is look at the zoning requirements, the zoning ordinance. And one of the first things that I noticed about Broussard, there were two restrictions. One was not as bad, but the one that said that you must be a thousand feet from a house stuck out strong to me. Because what I immediately determined that, that you could not ever find a salad in Broussard that met that requirement. There's, there's a house everywhere, you'd have to be outside of town, way out on the perimeter to, and that's almost a quarter mile. So, every so often I run into something like that, I always had the same kind of regulations that they, they changed their ordinance accordingly. But, so I knew that when we did find a site, we were going to have to come to the city and ask for variance primarily on that, on that aspect, or we would never, ever get a tower anywhere in the metropolitan area outside of where we were. So, to do that, one of the things we always do, we had a meeting, we sent the plans into the city and just said, here's what we're thinking about doing. And the mayor was very gracious in inviting us to come in and speak to he and his staff, and we did, and had a very lengthy, very productive conversation a couple of months ago about our proposal. Our initial proposal was a hundred and ninety-five foot pole, we call them monopole. You've seen them around, they, they're around town here, actually, it's just a singular pole. Hundred and ninety-five foot is very standard for a pole, what we call a monopole. So, that's what we needed for AT&amp;T. Well, the net result of that conversation and, and meeting with the mayor and his staff was that he didn't, and the staff didn't think that at that location that they would be comfortable in us proceeding forth with a hundred and ninety-five foot pole, so to speak. Even though it was on a commercial property, which we thought was really good, it was on a commercial road and way back behind a ditch, a drainage ditch, just, just felt like that if, if, if we could do something a little different, that we'd be more comfortable to come before the city. Well, what we came up with was the possibility of a monopine, you've seen those, I've heard about them. It's a stealth pole, it's a, it looks like a pine tree. And so, we, we, those are done around the country, you have to be careful how you do them because sometimes they can look worse than a pole, if you don't watch it. So, we, we talked at length about that, and we came up with some various samples, and, and we ran them by the, the mayor and what have you. So, what we, we, I don't, I don't know whether y'all have seen this picture or not, but this is kind of what we've come up with. This is about as good a pole, a pine tree as I've seen. Yeah, it's right there. So, they're also three times more expensive than a regular pole. And that's, you have to go up to high levels to get that approval. So, we did, we got with AT&amp;T, and we got with Vertical Bridge, who spends the money for the, for the, for the tower. And we decided that we would agree to do that. So, and also to lower the height down about, almost fifty feet, one ninety-five down to a hundred and fifty foot. So, both of those aspects from our standpoint were quite a concession in our world. So, that's what we agreed to do. So, we have moved forward with that, and we moved forward with the planning commission, and they recommended approval to come to the city council. So, that is, while we're here before you, I also have, I associate our legal councilman, Ms. Laura Carlisle here with me, and we kind of do this in tandem, so she also can make some comments, and we both can answer questions as they may come up, and respond to anybody from, you know, the audience that might want to make any comments. So, I'll leave it at that for right now, a little background on why we came here. So, Laura, do you want to say anything before, just, yeah, add on to what, what I just commented on?
Laura Carlisle, I'm an attorney over in New Orleans here representing Vertical Bridge. Mr. Levar Greenhouse is also here, he's external affairs for AT&amp;T to answer any questions as well. As Tom was mentioning, it will be, the proposed site is at approximately six thirty-six Albertson Parkway. It is designed primarily to serve East Main Street, Morgan Avenue, that corridor where there is a significant increase in traffic and need for increased coverage and capacity. And so, what the proposed tower, excuse me, here's the coverage that we're looking at right now. The proposed site is right here, generally speaking, yellow represents, red represents in-building coverage, can you get a signal, can you get coverage in building? Yellow is in your car, green is out of your car. So, this is what you're getting right here in this area, a lot of yellow, spotty red. This is what you will get, projected to get with the new, the new tower. As Tom said, it is a hundred and fifty feet, which is pretty modest. It does require a variance, the main one being from residential structures or district. And, and a thousand feet, as you mentioned, it is relatively onerous. I, I noticed your ordinance was probably written back in the early two thousand teens, two thousand twelve. You know, long are the, long gone are the days of analog signals being able to locate out by the interstate. Unfortunately, we're now in the world of digital signals, higher the frequency, the closer you've got to go, the more capacity. You're doing streaming, you're doing video. Two thousand twelve, we were probably right around three G, which just means third generation. In layman's terms, that's your texting, you're doing a little bit of internet browsing, you're not really downloading. We're now in the world of five G, where kids to go to school and learn remotely, you're doing telemedicine, you've got a, you've got a stream, a lot of data. Higher frequencies means you, you need more infrastructure. So, that, that's why we need the variance, because we can't serve the coverage and capacity needs by, by kind of getting closer. If we, if we could build further away from the demand, we would, but we got to build near the demand, near the demand. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm sure we'll have some comments as well, and so we can address those. Thank you.
So, we do have one blue card for public comment, Mr. Wendell Clark in opposition of the cell tower. Mr. Clark, have you stayed the company you with?
Yes, sir, I, I'm an attorney with Long Law Firm in Baton Rouge. I'm here representing SBA Towers, which is another owner and operator of cellular towers throughout Louisiana and all across the country. And I'm really here for a simple purpose tonight, I appeared at the planning and zoning commission for the same reason, to point out that SBA has an existing tower that's point eight miles from this proposed site.
The, how far again, sir?
Uh, uh, point, point eight miles. And the, the tower that's proposed is an a hundred and fifty foot tower. The tower that SBA has is two hundred and eighty-three feet. So, it has, it, it has the ability to reach out further than a tower that's a hundred and fifty feet. Now, there, there's dispute between SBA and AT&amp;T about the capacity and whether what our tower can do is, will be sufficient. We reached out to SBA when we found out about their application for this tower, and we made a proposal to them to match the rent on the tower that they, that was being proposed to be added. And we believe that the SBA tower can provide the same services, the same coverage, and, and accommodate the same equipment that AT&amp;T needs without having to build a new tower. AT&amp;T declined our proposal and said very little in response other than that they didn't believe our tower was sufficient, but there was no discussion about any details or what we might be able to do for them. So, so I'm, I'm here to, to advise that, that your ordinance under section twelve and other provisions favors co-location whenever that's available, and we do have a tower that's available. AT&amp;T and Vertical Bridge would say, well, the ordinance says that you only have to investigate co-location if there are other towers within a quarter of a mile of your proposed location. And the, the ordinance does say that under twelve point two point one, but it also says that, that there is an express preference for co-location whenever available. And we want to point out to the town council that we do have a tower, we do believe it would provide the same services and the same scope of coverage, that it will accommodate AT&amp;T's equipment, and that we will match the rent that, whatever it is that's been proposed for the new tower. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Where, where is that tower, speaking of?
It is at one thirty-seven East Robisho Road. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to give an opportunity for opposing opinion, which we would give you also.
What, what Mr. Clark didn't explain is SBA's business. SBA is a tower company, it's not a carrier. It makes money by people, off of people locating on its tower. So, a new tower means competition, it means a breach of its monopoly in this area. And Mr. Clark's very good, that's why he's here, to protect that revenue stream and to protect that monopoly that they have. There were a couple of other, other inaccuracies I, I should correct. Your, your ordinance actually does address co-location. It says if it's within a quarter mile, you have to investigate co-location. This is three quarters of a mile away, which is light-years in telecom frequency, that kind of language. He's right, it's a much taller, more intrusive tower, it's two hundred and eighty-three feet. Doesn't mean AT&amp;T gets to go on the top of it, it's already got carriers. So, by the time it goes on it, it's way on down the tower. So, it's not any taller, just because it's taller, if it were, doesn't mean the signal travels. What Mr. Clark also did not tell you, which he may not have been privy to, is the letter that we provided the council earlier to, today, directly from AT&amp;T explaining exactly why the SBA tower does not work. The tower that is proposed from Vertical Bridge, it's designed to address two issues. One is increased coverage in this high-traffic area. Another one, and this is going to get very technical, way outside of my wheelhouse, just because I use the words doesn't mean I understand them all, and that's why Levar is here. It's an offload site. It is designed to offload and relieve high coverage and high traffic, basically to your east and your northwest. So, this tower will help congested sites in other areas of the city that SBA's tower simply cannot do. So, it is absolutely not true that they can deliver the same technology, address the same needs. Regarding SBA's offer, which is appreciated at the eleventh hour to match the rent on this tower only when they see their revenue stream going away, SBA's business, this is an ongoing dispute between, there is an ongoing dispute between AT&amp;T and SBA. It's been going on for a decade or more, and it's about not being able to agree to a standard rent or lease agreement. SBA wants to charge more, AT&amp;T doesn't want to pay it, so they go to other tower companies and turn SBA since people like Mr. Clark out in an attempt to use your zoning laws to, to protect their business. This discussion right here is not a business dispute, and a business dispute discussion has no place in this zoning discuss, discussion, given your rules on co-location, which are not triggered in this case. Thank you.
Good evening, the Barbara Greenhouse, AT&amp;T Government Affairs. I thought about saying, to address the gentleman's, I guess, request for co-location, we, our first attempt is to co-locate. These towers are not cheap, we're looking at two, three, four hundred thousand dollars. So, just a good business since AT&amp;T wants to co-locate first, to save that revenue to invest in other areas. We don't get money besides when you pay your bill from outside entities. So, we want to make sure that we're investing in the best way possible. We recently announced the cell tower in Carrin Pro, actually two, those are both co-located with a different company. We just did one in Kinder, those are co-located with a different company. So, our first option is to co-locate and look at those options to co-locate. As Laura said, there's, there is a legal dispute between AT&amp;T and SBA. I won't go into it, but the simple fact is, if we want to invest almost two to three hundred thousand dollars to build a new tower, their rent is excessively high, and what that is doing is preventing us from investing in communities such as Broussard. Part of my job is to interact with the mayor, the council, and be mindful of the city. So, part of what I do as they open up the PPE plant, reach out to our RAN engineer and say, this is how Broussard is growing, to research articles, I think the mayor said a year ago, two and a half years ago, that in a six-month timeframe, I think three dozen new businesses have opened up. So, it's my job to be aware of that, bring that back to our RAN team, to drive down these streets. As I came up, can't remember the street, there was a subdivision, I noticed that my phone dropped from five G to LTE to just two bars. Now, our RAN engineers tell you that two bars don't indicate signal strength. Chief, I was not texting and driving, let me put that in clarity. But I did, I pulled on side of the road respectfully and mindfully, and I tried to get a connect, to get service. And Facebook, Instagram, all those services that we may not like, but we depend on, that we use, they were slower than when I was on Albertson Parkway and when I got into the heart of the city. Also, Chief Champagne, Chief Oliver, they are on first net. So, these tower upgrades come with first net, and that's our first responder network, so it helps to solidify that network. Also, E nine one one, I think right now with E nine one one, they can locate you up to maybe ten to fifty feet. So, all these upgrades are helping the city. I think eighty percent, I saw a statistic that said eighty percent of all nine one one calls are made by wireless, consumer wireless person, someone using a wireless device. So, that's why we need these new towers. As Broussard grows, we try to grow in advance of Broussard. Julian Park, we watch those areas mindfully, and we try to upgrade as early as possible. I use Carrin Pro as an example. When they were building the Amazon facility, I reached out to our RAN engineer and said, hey, this is what's going on in Carrin Pro. And of all the pairs where I'm from, they're building a, I think, yellow wood pine, they do pine, they do stain. It's a twenty-two million dollar facility. It's my job to alert our RAN engineers, and we look at the network coverage and see what is the best way to get coverage in that area, so you can use your cell phone, so that first responders can operate, so that kids can learn from home, people can use telehealth. So, long story short, we've done a lot of research, our RAN engineers, which are way smarter than me, they looked at both tower locations, the ones proposed and the one that SBA had, SBA had, and, and it does not provide the same coverage. We also met, Tom met with the mayor, I had discussion with the mayor to try to address additional concerns, tower height, aesthetics, they wanted it like a tree, site maintenance. Also, if there's no carrier on that site within a certain timeframe, can a tower be removed? So, AT&amp;T really wants to be a good corporate partner with the city of Broussard, and that's A, another reason why we're trying to build this tower. So, that's the AT&amp;T just of it, and any questions, feel free to ask me.
Mr. Greenhouse?
Yes, sir.
One very specific question. Are you saying with, with clarity that this site would absolutely do a better job of coverage for the residents and businesses of Broussard than the site that's being proposed by Mr. Clark on that existing tower?
That is what our RAN engineers told us, yes, sir.
It is not, okay, you talked about a lawsuit or disagreement, which is respectfully not this city's issue.
Correct.
The site that is, that's being proposed tonight would have a, a. The site that is, that's being proposed tonight would have a, a better, uh, would produce better coverage for our city than if the, if that same, uh, equipment was located on the site?
Yes, it's equivalent to moving a modem in your house. If you move a modem from the center of your house and put it outside, you shift the coverage. So where, where we're trying to cover this site, I think the SBA site is almost a mile away, eight tenths a mile, but it's almost a mile away, um, from where we want to utilize. So you're shifting the coverage, which means we cannot cover the same area. So like I said, it's equivalent to moving a modem in your house. As you shift, you lose coverage and we choose sites based on customer demand. So that's why we're really committed to sites with.
It doesn't look like there's any other questions for Mr. Greenhouse. Thank you for, for the information. Uh, Mr. Clark, would, would you like to address the council?
I just want to clarify that we're not here for SBA to, in, in, in an effort to monopolize the market or, or anything else. SBA works with AT&amp;T on more than seven thousand sites across the country. So it's not like we're at odds. We, we are at odds. We do have some disagreements over some sites. That disagreement doesn't have anything to do with the location in Broussard. Because we, we're not talking about excessive rents or, because we've offered to match their rent with whatever it is that they are proposing to pay Vertical Bridge. So that's a, that's a, uh, not an issue here. Uh, the suggestion that this was a last-minute offer i, is not correct. We sent a letter on July the twenty-second to make this offer to, uh, AT&amp;T and it's been out there and they didn't respond until September seventh, when they said they weren't interested. Um, I, I, Mr. Greenhouse says that engine, his engineers tell him that our tower won't suffice, that it won't provide the coverage they need. My engineers tell me that it will because it's a higher tower and can reach out further. Otherwise, it's the same equipment. It just goes on a tower. Now, uh, Ms., uh, AT&amp;T's attorney pointed out that perhaps there wouldn't be room at the higher part of the tower. But that's not accurate. We have a tenant whose equipment is located, I think, at a hundred and ninety feet. So there's plenty of room above that, up to two eighty-three, if they want to locate up there. So I, I, I just, I, when things are said, I want to come up and respond and make sure that you understand both sides of the story before you make your decision. And I appreciate the time to do that. Thank you.
Counsel discussion or questions?
If, if we, uh, the tower, SBA tower, tower, we see the AT&amp;T coverage to compare, putting it on the other tower, which is a mile away, we have any comparison on coverage? Like you see, you have your map, you're showing, when you put the tower on Albertson's Parkway, we're going to, we fill in a, an area.
We, we don't. Um, and just to, to clarify something, there, there are two concepts in this industry. It's coverage, you know, can you hear me now? Can I get a signal? Then there's capacity. Not only can I get a call, can I download, can I stream, can I do telemedicine, can I do all that? So there's two different concepts. The proposed tower will improve coverage better than SBA, but its primary purpose is to relieve a capacity issue in this downtown area. And to do that, it is optimally located with some towers to the east and to the northwest. It's integrated with those to offload from congested sites. So they work together. That's the real reason this SBA tower, eight tenths of a mile away, will not work. And it's no surprise that SBA doesn't have optics into that and why its engineers can't testify to it. It's not AT&amp;T. It's not a carrier. It, it's very bold to get up here and say, SBA's engineers can say, you AT&amp;T, you can use our engineers, we know. They don't know. They have no optics into AT&amp;T's technology and their system and what need, equipment needs to be integrated. Regarding the purpose of being here, SBA is not here on some altruistic mission to counsel the city of Broussard. They're here to protect their business. They are, they are a landlord. That's all they are. They are Walgreens looking at a CVS looking to locate across the intersection. That is the only reason they're here. Regarding the rents, this was a last minute. This process, by July, this permit application was already in process. Do you know how much goes into it, happens before that? People like Mr. Holloman have to go out and investigate ten or twelve sites. This is years in the making. And in July twenty twenty-two, on the verge of seeing a new tower being built, they said, wait a minute, we'll match your rents. That's all well and good at the last, that's not really how you can efficiently run a business or update infrastructure in a jurisdiction. What Mr. Clark also failed to mention is SBA, and maybe I'm getting into a little bit too much information, SBA is very unique in its business structure. It owns the real estate rights to its towers. So every time AT&amp;T or another carrier wants to upgrade equipment on the same tower, they get to raise the rates. And those rates aren't regulated. Those rates don't have a ceiling. So every dollar that goes into SBA's pocket is a dollar that's not going into infrastructure for the city of Broussard. Thank you. Thank you.
There is no further public comment that I can see?
No comments.
Counsel discussion?
But I need somebody to move in a second. Nobody did that first.
Do we have, we have a motion for the variances?
I'll move.
I'll second. We, we would vote on both at the same time?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second.
Add a question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Ordinances for introduction. Item five point one, ordinance number two-two dash seven four two. An ordinance annexing certain properties located at section thirty, township temps ten, South Range five east Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, being known as the Gaspar Bernard, annexation in voting district three. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Our presenter tonight, we have listed as Mr. Daniel Hutchinson.
Mayor, um, this actually is a Gerald. We've already turned over all the certificates, so Gerald.
Gerald, will you comment? Comment for the council, please?
I, I've reviewed the, uh, Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the petition, the certificates of the assessor and the, uh, certificate of the registrar voters and all of the requirements are in order, uh, if the council wishes to proceed with the annexation.
The map of the, of the property is in the council's packet. Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Counsel discussion?
Question.
District six? At large?
Yay.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinances for adoption. Item six point one, ordinance number two-two dash seven four one. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three operating budget of revenues and expenditures to increase authorized expenditures by fifty thousand dollars for, for capital outlay drainage project. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Second.
This is the second, uh, vote on this item for the council. Uh, it was discussed last.
No public comment.
Thank you. No public comment. It was discussed last meeting, so this will be the final vote. Um, council discussion.
Question.
At large?
Yay.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
That, so that was the last item on our agenda. Just a couple of quicks and announcements, uh, reminded that, uh, Chief Olivier invited everyone to National Night Out, which is Tuesday, um, October fourth at St. Julian Park. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. And, and, uh, so just a reminder on that, that's a public event. We welcome everybody to come out to it. And then, um, October seventh will be Broussard Day held in Broussard. There will be events at the Vassal House in the morning and then at the Arsenal Park later in the afternoon, including a jambalaya cook-off, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Please drive safely. Meeting adjourned.